This work session of the Annapolis City Council is called to order at 3:04 PM on November, I'm sorry, November. It's been a long month, folks. On April 24th, 2025. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Jackson City Attorney, would you please present the first item on the agenda?
Yes, thank you. The first item on the agenda is ID 625 City Council, I'm sorry, Council Work Session for CIP Presentation, Debt Affordability and Other Budget Items. This is a joint meeting with the Financial Advisory Commission.
And do we have the Financial Advisory Commission here? All right, well, I suppose they were invited. So, all right, at this time, I'll turn it over to our Director of Public Works, who's going to give us a presentation about the CIP, and then we'll move on to debt affordability with our good friends from Davenport Public Finance. Director Vogel, how you doing today?
Fantastic, thank you. I am Vogel, Public Works Director. And so my presentation today will exactly match the format and structure of last year. Should be familiar to everyone, except for Alderman Huntley, who is new. We'll do a quick overview of the Capital Projects Program, talk about new projects, significant changes, and that threshold is $500,000. Talk a little bit about City Dock, and then have a discussion. So I should be able to get through the slides in about five minutes or so.
Vogel, we still don't have your presentation. Okay, I'm sorry.
Pausing. I'll keep going.
I'm sorry, Alderman Finlayson, did you have a question? No, she's gone.
She's having trouble finding the presentation in the Finance Committee Budget folder.
Okay, sorry. Let's keep moving. Thank you, Director Vogel.
So just kind of an overall distribution of where the capital projects are. It should be noted that particularly there in sewer water and watershed restoration, those are largely annual recurring projects, and they just continue to build over time. So there is not $70 million of unspent money in the water fund, for instance. The same thing occurs in the general fund, but only on a handful of projects, things like streets, sidewalks, and so on. So significantly less new projects in FY '26, sorry, that's a typo, compared to FY '25, where there were about double this number with a total of 20 million. And I do have each of these listed later in the presentation when we get to that point. But I'll just pause here and let you absorb.
What's the name of the presentation? I can find it on the chair drive. Because it's not posted on Legistar.
For anybody having trouble with the presentation, just motion at Ms. Jackson, she'll come help you.
Moving on to projects with cost or scope changes. And the numbers there that you see in parentheses are the page numbers in the CIP Budget Book, which I believe all of you have printed out. Some noteworthy ones here, Cars Eltonia Beach Park has increased substantially in city funding. And I'm just really going to talk primarily about things that have a large amount of city funding. Cars Eltonia Beach Park, City Dock, Resilience and Revitalization. And then the Connecting Communities project there on page 36, that we removed $2 million from fiscal years '26 and '27 because there weren't projects maturing enough in the design to justify needing those construction dollars in these next two years. So that picks up at its approved level last year in '28 and beyond.
I think Alderman Finlayson has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe you'll get to it. Two questions. South Southwood and Gross Avenue, is that included in any of this?
No, because there's no substantial change. So what I'm trying to do here is hit the wave tops of the capital projects. You know, there's 113 pages in the book there, and I didn't want to bore everyone to death by going through project by project. Where there is no significant change, you can kind of think of things as moving along. Although, you may want to take note of where schedules shift because we do have a significant number of schedule slips.
Okay, thank you.
But no significant financial changes.
At the risk of nickel and diming you, Director Vogel, I would include Acton Cove Park on there, which went from, I believe, somewhere around $350,000 before to $735,000.
Right. I did a pure numerical calculation filter, $500,000. If it didn't hit $500,000, I didn't throw it up here.
All right, that's fair. Thank you.
I could have done a percentage, you know, if it increased by more than 50%, then, you know, this is the way I did.
Thank you for explaining that.
Just one project removed from the CIP. We have completed several this in the past 12 months, but those have not been removed from the CIP book yet. There's a one- or two-year lag between actual physical completion of a project and when we remove it from the budget books. City Dock, major changes here in what we're showing in the budget for two reasons. One is that last year, we made an intentional decision to only show in the budget table the costs that we could afford within what was firm identified funding at that time. And so if you look at last year's book, you'll see a note in there that says construction costs are estimated to be $72 million, but you looked at the construction and it was much less than that. This year, we wanted to make everything match, and so we took the actual known construction costs and all the other costs at the time and added about $15 million into of additional funding, $5 million external and an additional 11 or so, I think, out in fiscal year 2028. So now it's a much cleaner and more accurate look at the City Dock project. The other change that we have here is we have picked up some additional costs that we didn't really necessarily thinking about last year, a critical areas mitigation fee and a developer fee. So all told, we're looking at, I think that adds up to, yeah, they're 88 million. Now, that 88 million breaks down kind of like this. $50 million is outside funding. $6 million is the city just transferring money to ourselves. The critical areas mitigation fee is just something we move out of the capital project into the critical areas fund, and the administrative fee is something that we just use to fund some city overhead. So that leaves $32 million of actual city funding that is going towards the project.
Can I ask a question on this?
Sure.
I guess I'm chairing the meeting, so I'm asking myself. The, so up here, we're seeing an additional $5.2 million in funding for FY '26. Looking at my budget book, I see the $5 million worth of pending grants, and then $250,000 that's labeled as Bonds General Fund. Can I ask you, why is that $250,000 in, if it is general fund bonds, why is that particularly important?
That's to cover that admin fee above.
Right, but why, why are we doing that out of bonds as opposed to out of that $5 million of grants? We're not allowed to get overhead out of those grants?
Typically, that's the way we handle things, is that it's difficult to get grantors to pay something like city staff. They require a tremendous amount of paperwork and documentation and audits and so on and so forth. So it's something that, in general, you won't see city overhead being paid out of grants. Not that it's, for some grants, it's possible. Just generally speaking, the juice is not worth the squeeze.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of speaking on behalf of finance there. And that really concludes my prepared remarks. Now we can talk about questions on new projects, other projects that have changes.
Alderman Finlayson, looks like you have a question.
Mr. Vogel, going back to City Dock. So according to this, nothing is going to happen in the '27. We skip over from '26, what's planning to be budgeted, to '28.
Correct.
So what happens during that interim year? Is there the ongoing construction from what we funded in '26?
Exactly. Exactly. So if you just add the amount of approved appropriations, prior approved, plus with the funding that's in 2026, that will carry us all the way through the end of fiscal year 2027. And then once we start needing to pay the bills in fiscal year 2028, we'll need that additional funding.
So should we see that in all the programs, projects that are, that span multiple years?
You often will. You often will see funding spread across multiple years.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Alderman Savage.
I'm still trying to gather my thoughts together with all this as far as specific project questions, but big picture, and I brought this up earlier, I think it was last week's meeting. I'd like to, I'd like to figure out a better process to keep council updated on some of our, not just CIP projects, but also budget amendments because they're all, and I think Finance is working on the budget amendment part, but for CIP projects. And I know that you have a CIP Project Tracker spreadsheet that you use.
Correct.
Internally, and I believe we do have access to that, however.
You do.
And I see, I don't know how widely known that is. You know, I forgot I had access to it until I just did a search trying to find some other emails I sent out. It looks like you do have target construction date, target finished construction.
Finished design, yep.
Yeah, because that's the information I was trying to find is, is almost, and I think that'd still be good to see if we could get the data organized a bit differently to show. I know we have a CIP project list in the budget, but is there something we can add on to that list of just the CIP budget name and number along with projected start date as far as, as far as, you know, design, submission date or completion date, construction start date, and then completion date on that? Because it'd be good to conceptualize, then we can look and see. Because, you know, we have a number of projects that we put in the books. I know Alderman O'Neill has had a basketball court that's been fit for four years. You know, I've had like the crosswalk at Bay Woods, which is in the budget this year, but we actually funded it last year. And I know you guys and gals are balancing how to prioritize them, and that's another question. But I'd like to be able to just see where they are in the pipeline as far as timing so we can get an idea of what.
Right, right. And so currently, what we have is obviously you have to flip back to the page to get that information. Happy to work with Finance. If we use the table that's there now, that will add columns and it gets, you know, even busier and smaller. But maybe we could just, you know, just spitballing ideas here, create a separate one, kind of a more condensed table that really just gives, summarizes the status. That would be easy enough.
Yeah.
And something we didn't do this year that we did last year, and I'm kind of offering that up now, is when, once we get through the budget process, is to do a CIP update. I think that was helpful for all of you, helpful for us to talk through all of the CIP projects, the status, where, you know, scope things.
Yeah, and I think.
That's time well spent in a work session, in my view.
Yeah.
And I, oh, do you want to keep going, or you want to? I'll budget matter.
If I may, thank you. Last, last week, I think it was, during my presentation, I showed you all the online version of the capital book. Perhaps this is something that we can add to that as well because I'm sure it's not just you, right? I'm sure the citizens of Annapolis would want to know that information as well so we can work with everyone to continue to build that out, make sure we're as transparent as we should be.
We've been, we've been working with the folks who run the website to kind of being able to pull that exact information and make it much more public facing and user friendly. And so that's, that's another work in progress.
Yeah, and just because of our workload, we need to be spoon-fed things as council. And so at least personally, I do, because there's just so much to keep track of. But my point is, again, like, you know, we need to keep our constituents' expectations realistic. And so if we can point to them, hey, here's a timeline. We can use that for our own purposes to say, here's when this is, it's funded, haven't forgot about it. It'd be helpful. But I'll follow up, I think, just, I'll schedule a follow-up meeting with you perhaps, or somebody else with Public Works, just to go through some of the specific questions I have. I can't get them out today. But related to all that is kind of the timing. I know there are a lot of factors that play into the timing of projects. Is there any, so I guess, what do you, what do you want to say to that point? Like, what kind of things go into when you determine a project, if you can start this year, next year? I'm assuming it's funding, but staffing, like, what's, what's the biggest bottleneck you have at this point for CIP project completion?
There probably isn't one. So going into, like, prior to, really about four months ago, when Jeff Wentz got here and we hired Allison DiMatteo and Jen Fade has moved over, mostly spending her time in the water and wastewater arena, we were really short-staffed, right? And so it would be a year, year and a half before somebody would touch a project. Or something famously, infamously, like Robert Eads, a change order would just sit on somebody's desk for six months before they were able to process a contract modification to a designer to get the, and so the project just sits on hold for a while. Not that I'm completely comfortable with where we are. I still think we're, we still have a little bit more workload than we have staff, but we're much better than we were 12 months ago. So you really won't see this, just something, nothing moving on a project. You shouldn't unless we just completely drop the ball and it drops off a radar, which that tracker is supposed to prevent. Nothing, you know, nothing moving for six months. So the budget is passed, you should see design contracts being over, going over to procurement, and then the process starting, rather than it just kind of going into a queue in Public Works before we can even attack it.
Okay. And my last question is another kind of big picture. It'd be, at first, I think it'd be nice to be able to, especially CIP projects that are unique to our wards and are pretty much our wards primarily, if we could be given a copy, like during, I don't know, 30%, 60% review, to review things, to, if we have comments. Because I just, I think it should, I'd like to ensure that our intention with the original allocation of money, especially if the project that we specifically got put into the CIP, even from, I guess, earlier stages, is, you know, get us on board as far as, you know, is this, is this your intention, so everybody's on the same page? But again, it gives us a chance to submit comments as we see something going through the design process. Make sure it's still going to, again, meet our expectations. Does that make sense?
So you do, you do construction for a living. Not everybody does. So just shooting out a bunch of construction plans is, may not be helpful to everyone here.
True.
So, but there's, you know, things that have a lot of community involvement, there's always a community meeting and multiple ones. Tucker Street being, you know, a recent example. But we've done that with Cheston Avenue, Street End Park. That same thing will happen with Thompson Street, Street End Park, things of that nature. Now, you know, I don't, I don't know what's happened with, let's say, Annapolis Walk, right? Has there been community engagement? Have you been updated? To be honest, right, there are a lot of projects. I know I tend to track programmatically and make sure that projects are progressing, you know, on schedule, on budget. I hear that, oh, we had a community meeting, but I can't retain all of that in my head. People do, you know, add notes, and then three months later, that's no longer the most current status. But, but it's a great point, and so I'm curious in getting some feedback. When you have a project, do you feel like there's the right level of community engagement? And are you brought in to those projects?
Well, and just a real quick comment, and then I'll yield the floor, is that I hear your point as far as, you know, not everybody may even have familiarity with reading plans, but I guess what I'll say might be a good alternative would be if the project managers could maybe on a quarterly or tri-annual basis, give the, especially if there is a particular older person who's, you know, in their ward, give them just a quick update, even if it's like, here's what we have going on with the project. It just because it's, personally, I find it difficult to even keep up with remembering to check in. It'd be nice to get just an occasional update.
Sure.
May I piggyback on that?
Sure, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, let me, I'll just say, I also think that's something we can have City Council associate, or what we rename that to be, you know, yes, Alderman Finlayson.
Is there a tracking record for all of these projects? Can we go somewhere other than the budget book and see what the status of each project is? Which may speak to Alderman Savage's concern. You know, if I want to find out what's going on with the Annapolis Walk, where do I go to get that information? And is it updated so that I can follow it without you having to send me stuff all the time? But is there a site or something?
There is, but as Alderman Savage mentioned, it's not the most user-friendly. It is largely an internal document. If we could summarize that, make it public facing, get it out on a website, that would probably be better for you. But I will show you what exists at the moment, and you do all have access to this. I can reshare the link.
If I may interject here, Deputy City Manager Jackie Hilde.
You do know you'll have to show us how to get to.
I will. Like I said, I will send out a link, but here's the sheet.
Alderman Finlayson, there is a proposal from the Communications Office, from the Communications, our PIA, Mitchell Stevenson, to create such a portal that would be on our website, that would be accessible to you and to the public to go through all projects, the CIP projects, as well as other projects and other departments, that has pictures, like when it started, description, when it started, what's the timeline, details about it, and something that we could update. And it's software that she can work with very easily. So that's a project that she proposed to the directors just recently, and that should be kicking off this year.
Is it updated?
It's not created yet. It would be, it would be the kind of thing where staff could go in and update it, and they wouldn't have to search for it, and it wouldn't be as technical, maybe, as what Public Works keeps records of.
Okay, and who did you say is?
Mitchell Stevenson. She's spearheading that project.
So I would think that what we're looking for would come out of Public Works that would keep us, and not just us, the constituents as a whole, a site to go to to see where every project is.
Right.
The status of the project.
Yes.
And then if we have questions, then we speak to whomever, and there should be a person who's the contact person with that project, so we can direct questions.
That's the idea that on that, each page that you would go to, whether it's a CIP That's the idea that on that each page that you would go to, whether it's a CIP or it's a project, project out of transportation department, wherever, some other kind of project that's not on the CIP. They would have a contact person, you know, with your contact information.
This doesn't exist yet.
Does not. No.
Okay. But Director Ver is showing us what does exist.
Correct. This is what we use and we have, I've also shared this with council. I mean, it's, you, you would have to know how to get to it. Um, but it, it has kind of these maze, um, these significant milestones when we, at least when we expect to start construction, when we expect to finish construction and a short status. This is the kind of information we would, uh, share on the website that Jackie was just talking about.
Alderwoman Pendell Charles has had her hand up for a little while.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Director Vogel, I'm going to go back a few moments. What you said about community outreach and engagement and, and don't take this the wrong way. With the Gross Avenue project, we did have a, a, a site meeting, uh, with Severn River, and we had quite a few residents to come out in a private contract. And with, with the South Southwood, we had probably about 30 people at the library for that, for that meeting. And, and we did get a lot of information and I guess, and I'll be honest, I have not read the CIP in, in, in the binder. I, 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 that's derelict in my duties. But if this has, if there's been a shift in, in the, in the timeline for those two projects, I'm going to be honest, I'm really disappointed. Now, correct me if I'm wrong. And so I think I did my due diligence, followed what I need to follow, except I have not looked. Uh, but, uh, if it's not in the fiscal year 26, we, we follow the rules. And, uh, I, like I said, if it's not there, I guess I'm somewhat disappointed, but we can talk about that offline.
Understood.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Alderwoman O'Neill, you're up next.
Thank you. So as you and I have been talking, uh, there's certain projects, I'll say, like the Tucker Street boat ramp. There was a lot of engagement, community meetings. We had like five of them in between 2023 and 2024. Last year, we rallied the troops and got it through Port Wardens. And now we're waiting a year before the public sees anything. So now they're, they're thinking that we're not doing anything from September until late next fall. Um, and I think that that's where we can do a better job from the city, like setting out the timelines and the details. Um, because I'm having people in there like, well, wait, what? We, we had to hurry up and make all these decisions. And the same with Robert Eads Park. I mean, in 2022, I was told that we had to make a decision that very day on the memorial. And I had basically 24 hours to decide whether it was going to go bigger or smaller and what kind of money we had for it. And that was in 2022. And if I'm correct, it's 2025 and there has been no other community engagement for it. And I'm not.
Which, which.
I'm not blaming you.
From the, on the design side, right? No news is good news in, in a way, right? And those are the normal timelines, right? Of, of it does take no less than a year to go from a concept design into a design set that you can submit for permits. Get those permits and put a project. A year would be really, really fast. You can typically kind of count on more like 18 to 30 months to go from a concept design, the kind of thing you would take to the planning commission, historic preservation commission, port wardens, uh, and then turn that around and, and to see, uh, construction start. There is a long line, right? Because, because you don't want to invest. No developer wants to invest. The city does not want to invest. Design coming up with, um, construction drawings for a concept that may get modified in that process of that initial community engagement, a port wardens meeting, a, a planning commission meeting.
I think that's where we can do a better job of managing constituents' expectations and timelines. Um, it would be better for us if we had, you know, CIP project number 12345. It was approved here. It's funded here. The expectation is here. And maybe it's just a general on the page that we're going to have forward facing hopefully soon, um, that says an average timeline for a project like this is X. And so that they're not thinking that we've forgotten, because I've got constituents thinking that we have forgotten about Robert Eads Park and that it's not going to happen because it hasn't been talked about in.
Yeah, but we're, we're all very much in agreement. It, it, Abe, like the communication thing that we're talking about would, would really be helping. Um, it's something we'd all like to see.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Um, Alderman, I'll get to you in one moment. I just have one I wanted to bring up. The Tulsa Street Park project. I was looking at it and I'm surprised I didn't catch it till my first read through, but I looked at it and.
It is not the Tulsa Street Park.
It's not. What do you mean?
The page you see in the budget book is not the Tulsa Street Park project.
Right. Yes. It, it appears to be the traffic, safety improvements.
It is a duplicate of a different project. Uh, I have that up here somewhere. Description missing in draft budget book is what shows on this line.
Okay. But the intention is for some street park or some park on Tulsa Street to be included there?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
That was a planning and zoning project, I believe.
Got it. Um, so I'll ask, uh, maybe budget manager show if we can just get an updated page on that at some point. That would be helpful.
Um, sure. Who's the contact for that? You said planning and zoning?
Probably Eric.
Okay. We need an updated page from him as those are provided to us.
Yeah.
And I will get that to you.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman, our net was next. Unless, Alderman Finlayson, was your question about Tulsa Street? Okay.
So I'd like to return to City Doc, because I know at page 27, we're going to get a million questions and I'm looking at the columns here. I see the $32 million, uh, total appropriations. Uh, and it's staying prior approved. I'm assuming that is still the FEMA money?
Correct. That $32 million is the FEMA grant.
Right. And then where is the $5 million additional dollars coming from?
If you look in non-city funding sources, the last two lines say Anarundel County Grant. Uh, there is currently $2 million going through their uh, budget process, uh, and a private donor of $3 million.
Where are you finding that?
It's, uh, about halfway down the stage.
In the non-city funding sources, kind of just above the table.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Good. So when I get the phone calls, I'll know what to look. Thank you very much.
And I believe the idea with that private donor, correct if I'm wrong, director, is that that's going to be some kind of naming rights?
That is naming rights for the, uh, Harbor Master Building. Correct.
And the, has there, I guess my question is like, to what extent have we had conversations about that? Is that, how sure are we of that?
I don't know. That, that's a good question for the mayor. I, I believe he's very sure about it.
I don't suppose our deputy city manager wants to weigh in? No. Okay. Question for the mayor. For anybody watching at home, the mayor is, uh, picking his wife up. So pretty good excuse, I guess. Alderwoman Finlayson?
Um, yes. The parking reorganization at Annapolis Walk, is that in parking? It's not in the CIP that I.
It is. It's still in the, so it's combined with the Annapolis Walk project.
It's not listed at all on the CIP page.
I think, I, I was just looking at Annapolis Walk and I believe it does say something about additional parking improvements. It's under, I think it's on the right-hand side. Yeah.
Page 17, it'll discuss it in the changes from prior year section and in the project description.
Changes from prior year.
Okay. Under changes to the prior year. Enhanced parking. You, you know what that project is? Thank you, everybody. The fact that the parking is going to be moved all the way around the park. And a change from parallel parking to pull-in parking and thus losing about three feet all the way around to the park. So is that a minor, um, change?
That's a significant change. Yeah.
Pardon me?
I mean, that's, it's a significant amount of funding.
That's, that's what I'm questioning because I'm, is it included? If you say it's included in this, that's great.
It is.
It is. Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah. That's, you'll see, I think we've added, um, $800,000 in, in funding.
I expected to see that in the project description, because that's a major change more than, you know, the playground equipment and all that stuff. The big issue is rearranging the parking for the park.
Right. Right. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Alderman Savage.
I will, uh, compliment the project manager here for an accurate description in the changes from prior year.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a feeling you might be asking a similar question to what I was going to ask if it's about this project. Okay. Go on then. So I, I just want to understand this one better because I, like I said, I was just looking at. You tell me you're spending an additional million dollars for parking at this park?
Yes. Yes. That is a, that is a good question. I don't know the answer to it.
And the, uh, funding is listed as other. Am I, what, what is that other?
That is interesting. I believe that's a mistake.
Okay.
There's, if you look in the funding table in the FY26 budget, it says other. It's not bonds, paygo, grants. It just says other.
Looks like it's cut off. That looks, that's, that's supposed to be capital reserve.
Other capital reserve.
It's just the print's cutoff.
So at this point, we've, we've previously approved $528,000 for site improvements in a park. That sounds great to me. I like parks. And what is being suggested is that we spend $800,000 more on parking here, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes.
If that sounded like a value judgment, that's because there was a little bit of that in my tone. Alderwoman Pendell Charles.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Director Vogel, if you want to bring 10 other members of your staff here whenever you come, feel free to do that. That's fine.
Sure. Um, and, and again, last year, uh, we did have a work session specifically to talk about the status of individual projects, this being a budget meeting. Uh, it has worked, you know, it worked fairly well, uh, last year for me, again, to hit the wave tops, because I, I, I do have a decent sense of the financial aspects of the, of the program.
But that's, that's not a problem. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. Just another higher level comment, um, big picture comment. Something on, and I think I mentioned this to you a bit, you know, we've talked about a timeline and I know the, the chair has talked about length of time to get through some of the permitting process. I'm not pointing fingers at all. Uh, but I'd want to make the point that, you know, something we've done in, in, in the, uh, county is look at ways to get stormwater projects streamlined, get blanket permits for certain types of work. And so my hope is that over the course, well, you know, assuming I'm back next time, I'd like to work with the department to figure out, maybe we could do it the rest of this year, but, um, anyways, figure out a way to identify certain types of projects, not just stormwater, but also perhaps transportation. Uh, could be other things, even like recreational improvements, like a basketball court that may not really require a robust review process, right? If you're putting in a crosswalk, we really don't necessarily need to do all the engineering again, because we have standard details we can utilize for a lot of that. So I'm kind of think of ways that we can perhaps speed up the process on some of these types of relatively minor or, or standard types of projects that we might be able to speed along. Um, I know that's a bigger process question we need to work on, but I'm just throwing that out there because, um, we do have a number of smaller projects in here as well that might benefit from some kind of blanket permit or expedited process. Cause I, I mean, the red tape can be maddening. I, I'm sure on your end too, right? Um, so, and I know that I've heard the chair talk about trying to streamline processes, you know, we don't, maybe we don't need an environmental review. No, that's coming for me on all, all types of projects, right? Uh, but there could be other types of reviews we don't necessarily need. So a bigger question, just to put, plant in a seed in your head for future conversation.
Sure. Makes sense.
I have a question for you, director. Uh, the Damit Waterworks Park, uh, gosh, collapsed dam, sounds very scary. Nobody wants that. I know the, the state of Maryland has many dams that are in disrepair. And one of the things, an effort I was involved in at the state level a few years ago was passing a law that said very explicitly that the state can allow private individuals to come in, take down those failing dams and, um, do it with, because they're able to sell the wetlands that are created by them. And I can imagine a way where you would also do that for rehabilitation of dams, even if you're not fully taking it down. I'm just curious on this, because again, nobody wants a collapsed dam. But, um, I'm curious if you have any thoughts on ways to defray this, the cost of this by working with private industry and potentially doing some of, some kind of public-private partnership on some of this land, if, if we could maybe sell wetland mitigation.
Um, it's, it's a good, it's a good idea. Um, I would, what I'm familiar with on any kind of public-private partnership is there has to be a revenue generating stream in order to obtain some financing.
And so just so.
And so nothing really jumps out at us other than the Waterworks Park project. And that one is pretty limited in scale in terms of what kind of revenue generating activities will be there.
So maybe, let me put it this way. The way that we were looking at it on the state level is where we had failing dams. The state was explicitly allowed to, say to a company, we will let you take down this dam on our property and in exchange, we will sign an agreement with you that says, because you're going to create a bunch of wetlands by taking down that dam and also doing some additional work, we will let you sell those wetland mitigation banking credits. So that revenue source.
I see. Was the wetlands mitigation credits. Great.
Yeah. So I'm just, I guess maybe my, my question for you was mainly to get kind of a reaction to that idea, but then also is that, is there any way that that could be possible in this scenario? Or are we solely talking about fixing that?
Well, we can't get rid of this dam because, um, State Highway 450, defense highway is right there. It would flood and erode without our dam.
Got it. Well, that's important. Yeah. Alderman Savage, you want to jump in just quick on that? It is, those wetlands are, well, it's a special state concern.
Um, so it'd be a huge analysis, I think, effort to, to alter them at all.
Okay. All right. We can keep moving then. Just, uh, an idea. Leave it at that. Do I see any additional questions? Boy, that's a quiet bunch today. Surprisingly so. I thought we were going to go for a while. Going once? Anybody? Going twice? Okay. Um, well, thank you very much, Director Vogel. We appreciate you coming here.
Thanks for having me.
Teaching us some more about some of these CIPs and sure you'll be getting some.
We'll see some of you again on Monday.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm sure you'll get some questions about it in the meantime. Thank you. At this, at this time, I would ask our representative of Davenport Public Finance to come join us, give a presentation about the debt capacity. Hey, Director Vogel, actually I do, did think of one other question for you while we're getting this one set up. We've got the gas station tanks that are getting put above ground. Uh, or we're putting, we're creating new gas tanks above ground. I understand why we can't keep them below ground. To what extent has the city explored, uh, working with the county and using their refueling facility?
We've, we've explored it. They've rejected it.
Okay. Thank you. Easy question. All right. Thank you very much. You aren't just introducing yourself. I'm sorry. I don't think we know each other.
Sure. Uh, good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Derrickson. I'm senior vice president, uh, with Davenport and Company, financial advisor to the city. Uh, and so today I'm here to present the annual debt capacity update. Um, and so this is really an overview of the city's debt affordability, you know, can you afford this debt? Um, so what we do here, um, is we look at the city's existing debt service for debt that's already been issued. Um, and then we estimate new debt service based on the proposed, uh, fiscal 2026 through 2031 CIP. Um, we also use the, um, proposed, uh, general fund expenditures for the 20 fiscal 26 budget. Um, and then we increase that 1% thereafter to come up with, uh, debt service as a percentage of expenditures, um, which really just shows how much of your budget, uh, you're paying in debt service. Um, and so the city has a policy target of 10% for debt service to expenditures, um, and then a ceiling of 12%. Um, and you can see here. And you can see here that based off of our calculations and for the new debt service, we're using our interest rate of 4.5% for the bonds issued in fiscal 26 and then 5% thereafter. So very conservative. And as I said, we're growing expenditures by 1%, which is also conservative. You'll see that you only move above that 10% mark in two years, fiscal '28 and '29. And you can kind of see this better here on the chart on slide two. The dark green bars are your existing debt service. The light, lighter green bars are the estimated new debt service. And then you can see the 10% policy threshold in blue, the 11 sort of midpoint in gold, and then the red is the 12%. And you can see that only '28 and '29 sort of just go above that 10% mark. Everything else remains below that, which is, is very positive. I will also say your debt policy at the 10 to 12% is, you know, industry standard. It's similar to what we see with other local governments. And sorting, keeping that debt service to expenditures at 10%, around that 10% and below is positive for your credit ratings as well. Here on slide three, this is just showing what you could potentially issue. This is only taking into account your existing debt service, not including the proposed borrowing in the CIP for fiscal '26 through '31. And you can see under the 10% policy, you have about $104 million. That goes up to 115.7 under the 11% midpoint and then about 131.2 at the 12% policy. But really, you don't want to get anywhere close to the 12% policy because you want some flexibility there. Here on slide four is just your proposed borrowing. So that top line, the proposed CIP amount, that is showing what is in the current proposed CIP for '26 through '31. And over that six-year period, you can see that totals about $67.4 million in anticipated borrowing. The borrowing amount just below that includes everything in that top line. And then for fiscal '26 and '27, it adds an additional $13.85 million in prior approved but unissued bonds, which takes up the total borrowing amount to about $95.1 million. So in taking into account that borrowing amount that's shown on the last, the previous slide, here is sort of the additional capacity left over at each of the different policy, you know, the policy target at 10% has about $10.2 million, goes up to about $25.7 at the midpoint, and then 41.1 at the policy ceiling. So, you know, overall, and I looked at the presentation from last year, fairly similar. You know, I think you are in a good place, sort of, you know, only getting over that 10% level in those two years. So I think that's a credit positive for sure. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, and this might be more to the budget manager, this is our debt service. What is our total debt?
I don't have that offhand. I can get that.
Okay, while, while you're doing that, I'll go on. I'm looking on page one down in the footnote and it's showing bonds, bonds issued at 4.5%. Is that what we're likely to be able to issue bonds at?
At the current market rate for this year, yes. You would be under 4.5% at this point.
So if we were AAA rated, would that rate be different?
I mean, it might be slightly lower, but in all honesty, the difference between a AAA and a AA plus, AA1, which the city is, it's a few basis points. It's not very much at all, so.
All right, thank you. And then turning to page five of the presentation, and again, the footnotes are the critical things here.
Yes.
So this is assuming our debt service is pegged to our general fund expenditures, which is, I think, starts to make this fairly conservative because we keep upping the ante. But it says here a 1% annual growth. Have we ever come close to only growing by 1%?
No, you're usually, you're usually over that, so that's why it's, it's conservative. So, but yes, that's what we've always assumed in the past. But yes, you're usually out before 1% growth.
So, so my read is that while this is a very good report, it's actually even better than what it looks like.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Alderman Savage?
Yeah, thank you. It's always, I always find it fascinating to see all this data. So I guess a question for you would be, if we look at the page one, or no?
Yep.
Yeah, page one. Or the chart, whatever's fine. But my question would be, so if we wanted to, first of all, I just want to acknowledge, yeah, because I remember last year we were all, some of us were concerned about tying our hands because it looked like, based on your assumptions, that we were going to have not much capacity, but turned out pretty well.
Yes.
But, so my question would be, if you look at, for example, in particular, 2028, '29, that, it's a little above 10%. If we wanted to, I'm not saying I want to do this, I'm just hypothetically, want to know our options. Like if we wanted to bring it down underneath 10%, so we had, or like bring it down, for example, to nine, just to give more flexibility in the future, presumably some things we could do would be to either push back the target start date for some of these projects or reduce the amount of
Potential.
active CIP projects. Is that?
Potentially, you could adjust what you, you issue. I mean, the other thing is, is, you know, we've also been conservative on the interest rates for the bonds. So I mean, in, in current years, we usually, for the first year, we've usually in the past used 4%. We did move that up to 4.5% this year. And we've always used 5% thereafter. So there's a little bit of cushion in the interest rate currently. And as Alderman Arnett mentioned, the 1% growth in expenditures, that would also sort of offset it. So you could adjust the debt to get under, but there's a few other variables in this calculation that you'll, most likely you'd probably end up below the 10% because of those other two variables, but you could adjust the debt if you, if you wanted to.
So if we were to reduce the tax rate and bring in less revenue, that would, of course, finally presumably impact our debt limit, would, these numbers would essentially go up because we'd have less, right? Is that right? Because we'd have less debt capacity because we'd be having less revenue.
Well, this is based off of.
Our budget would be smaller overall.
I mean, you would have to, I mean, expenditures would need to decrease as well. If you were, you know, obviously if revenues go down, you'd have to shrink your budget as well. Because ideally you would not want to utilize.
You're talking, you're talking, but I'm just, again, I'm not pushing for this, but I want to say, we will, and some of us probably have already gotten requests to look at reducing the tax rate.
Yeah.
I just want to be clear. So don't assume we're going to cut expenditures at the same time, because that's often not what people tell. They don't tell us what to cut. They tell us they want to get the tax rebate or whatever it is. So my point is though, if we do that, that is going to presumably change these percentages, right? Because as our overall budget is going to be reduced by X amount of dollars because we're bringing in less money, which we, will that, so won't that impact our debt services? As far as the percentage?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, lower revenues are going to impact your overall budget, including debt service as well. Yep.
Yeah, okay.
To your point, the, the chart will not look as pretty as it does now.
Well, sorry, I didn't hear that.
The chart, the bar graph will not look as pretty as it does now.
Exactly. Well, so, okay, well, that, you know, that's good to know. But to your point, can we actually see a scenario? Because I think it'd be helpful to show people. And even in case any of my colleagues are contemplating it, just to know, here's what it would look like if we decided to reduce, I don't know, the tax rate by five cents. I don't know what we would even.
No, I think I'll second what you're saying.
We had a, we, you know, 2017, we increased it by six cents. Originally, we were going to do 12 cents, but cut it in half. So I'm just, two, three cents, whatever. I'm just kind of curious what it would do to our total debt capacity, our ability to get projects done in the future.
What I might like to see, if it's possible as a follow-up, is a handful of different scenarios and how they would affect our ability to service our. And one of those I think should be what Alderman Savage is saying, is if we were to decrease the tax rate. Another might be if we, I don't think anyone's talking about increasing the tax rate, but if we had more revenues because the city had a stronger property balance, right? We had a stronger tax base. That would be interesting to see. And then I would also love to see in these scenarios, if it were somehow possible, if we could have a scenario of, nah, actually, never mind. I think that would be too complicated. I'm going to go to Alderwoman Pendell Charles.
I haven't quite finished. One other follow-up question, as far as you, just talking about the bonds. I know there was a slight issue a couple of months, I mean, it's, time's flying by here. It hasn't been that long. With the bond, a bit of a blip in the bond market with all the tariffs going on, the tariff war. So has that impacted us at all with that recent blip? And, and the second part of that question is, are you anticipating with your conservative estimates, any kind of, is there any other potential upset that could really impact us in the future that we need to be aware of?
Yeah. So yes, the market in March in particular, because of all the tariff, you know, issues, was fairly volatile. There were a number of issuers though that did go to the market. They got a number of bidders, a good amount of bidders. So there's still a market there for bonds particularly. I will say that rates have started to come down over the last week or so, you know, as things have quieted down a little bit. But, you know, any day could sort of bring potential volatility perhaps, but it seems to have quieted down over the last week or so. But yes, there are still issuers getting into the market. They are still getting, you know, high-rated issuers are still getting rates below the 4.5% that we're estimating. So I think there's still a market there. We have a number of issuers that went to market earlier this year. We have a number that are going to market in May, as well as, you know, sort of summer and later in the fall. So it seems like the, you know, the bond market, while volatile, still has an appetite for bonds.
What exactly happened is I just know generally what happened with the bond market, you know, a couple of weeks ago. But if that were to actually be much worse in the future, how would that impact it?
I mean, they were, you were still able to sell bonds. It's just that there was volatility. So rates were going up, you know, one day, a significant amount. Rates were coming down a significant amount the next day, just sort of swings depending on the news cycle and what was going on in particular with the tariffs. So, you know, we typically didn't see as large of swings. I mean, the swings were between like 30 and 40 basis points per day. You know, I would say over a three-day period, it probably went up about 100 basis points, but then came back down. So usually, you know, the MMD, which is the benchmark for municipal rates, typically holds fairly steady. Sometimes it's a little bit up, sometimes it's a little bit down. Seeing those larger swings is sort of an anomaly. We saw them during the COVID. That was probably the last time that we saw these more major swings. But, you know, even given those major swings, you know, some issuers adjusted and just waited and got into the market, you know, last week or, you know, this week, they just adjusted their sale time, but were still able to sell their bonds, which is, you know, perfectly reasonable. But yes, that's kind of what went on due to all of the tariff talk. It was just sort of larger swings up and then similarly swings down.
I'd like to put a fine point on Alderman Savage's question that I know both of my colleagues over here have questioned. If tomorrow the Fed chair gets fired and there is a huge loss, knock on wood, and there is a huge loss in confidence in treasury bills and in, in an unprecedented way, how does that affect the city now?
I mean, right now, I mean, all of your debt, your existing debt service is issued. That does not, that does not move. You know, if you were planning to come to market, you know, that's something that we would talk to you all about, about what is the best timing in terms of going to market. That would be the only time that it would potentially impact you. And that's something, as I said, can be moved. It's not like a set date. You have to go on a set date. It is something that can be discussed and adjusted as needed as we look at the market and what's best for the city.
Okay, yeah, I, I think I'm, my worry is about a situation that would be an unprecedented loss of confidence in US bond.
Yeah.
Federal bonds. That's my worry. I don't know that we have an answer for that, so I think I'm going to move forward to Alderwoman Pendell Charles and then Alderwoman Pendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This conversation is necessary, but I think, piggybacking off of what you're saying, we don't know what's going to happen within the next three years and nine months.
Yeah.
And any kind of major decisions, and I'll call it major, going below 10% may not be wise because we don't know what's coming tomorrow, tonight, because we've seen all this volatility within our, our country over the past just three months. Things change from day to day. And so I, I want to use a phrase that we can use here in Annapolis, let's stay the course. Because we want to be comfortable, but we don't want to make any major changes that could definitely affect everybody here. So that's just kind of my three cents worth today for inflation.
Yes.
You know that she's gone up from her two cents worth to her three cents worth now. Before I make my comment, I think Ms. Moran wanted to, did you want to weigh in?
Oh, no, I was just going to say that Mr. Chair is going to give me a heart attack.
I just wanted to comment on Alderman Savage's comments about taxes. You know, if we reduce taxes, we reduce services. We can pretend that that's not comparable, but, but it is. When we had to raise taxes, what, three years ago, it was to maintain the level of services that our community was accustomed to having. We could have reduced services then and not increased taxes, and the community didn't want to talk about it. And so we did what we thought was the best thing. But I, it concerns me to talk about it. And I know it's an election year, but to talk about reducing taxes, which is always a great discussion to have, but hand in hand, it's got to go with reducing services. So when you talk about what you want to cut as far as taxes, talk about what services to the community we also want. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm going to hazard a guess that you will not hear any argument from Alderman Savage on, on that. Any additional questions? So I mentioned that I would like to see as a follow-up a handful of different scenarios, mainly if our, if the city's recurring property tax revenue were to go down and if it were to go up. Maybe we can follow up on a couple of different scenarios on each of those. We're talking 5% or if we're talking 20% or whatever. Are there any additional scenarios my colleagues would like to add as alternative to be aware of as we are ensuring we're watching out for volatility? Yeah, Alderman Arnett?
So I think we can look back at the history. When we had the big housing bubble burst, our property assessments were flat. And that's because we have so many expensive properties and they tend not to be sensitive to those things. So I, you know, I think that we ought to be taking away from this that we've been well managed financially and we're pretty much sitting in the catbird seat. And the fact that we can even be thinking about a modest tax cut, not five cents, but I think indicates our financial health. But I'm trying to think of what, what scenarios, because the worries in the, the market have been that people aren't going to buy T-bills, not buy City of Annapolis bonds. So it really has to get really bad to get down to us. I'm trying to think of what scenario we would posit to look at. An answer to your. In answer to your question.
Yeah, no, I hear you, I think my concern, and this is not a, something that I would say is particularly well quantifiable, but is a loss of, of confidence, instability of government at certainly the federal level, but then trickling down to a level, and again, consider as we're seeing less grant money coming from the federal government, at this point, less grant money coming from the state government, that that could impact the confidence invested. Put another way, if Detroit goes bankrupt again, I don't think they're getting a federal bailout.
That's why I own my Dacia.
Anything else? No? All right, well, we will follow up on some of those scenarios we like to see from you. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for the informative presentation, feel like I learned some stuff today, thank you very much, have a good one.
Yeah, good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, oh, Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
The agenda has been completed.
Is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, session is adjourned.